I just first time I done this, so I want everybody to bear with me. All right, Eddie, have any exoneration?
We do, and we'll give you the time first, and then we have two refunds. They'll have it be signed here, and then there's another one on the inside, and there's four of those.
And on the refunds, you have two places to sign. All right, I'll make a motion to. What are these?
Exoneration.
Okay, real property, okay, I make a motion to present the real property exoneration this morning.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. And then you have to sign.
Refunds, you want to look at?
Yeah. I'd also make a motion to present the refunds presented this morning. First is an amount of eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. And the second is for the amount of eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, then you've got to sign two places on each one. Which should be four sheets total for each one. So just remember, refunds, you have two places to sign. Any land to divide or anything? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve second half payroll on January twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. What's the date, Tom?
One twenty-seven.
No. That's when payroll's going to be, is it?
If, no.
I thought we were doing the fifteen, oh, no, that's right, we're every two weeks, that's right, yeah.
Anybody, you don't have any questions regarding vouchers and invoices?
Nope, it's all simple.
I'll make a motion to approve vouchers and invoices. All in favor?
Aye.
For our minutes?
I am editing them.
Okay. All right, we're fast.
We'll have another meeting.
State settlements? I give.
He did, but I saw. He, he made the mistake, he handed them to me to look at.
So. Some more info?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the state settlements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ready, get your debit?
Uh-uh. I don't know. Okay, the first one is the appointment of Delmas Roberts to Dollar Ridge, Golly. Yes, he, Stradlin.
Anybody having any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve Delmas to the Golly Ridge PSD.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
And that's to end the drivers through December thirty-first, twenty-twelve. Okay, the next thing is our standard order increasing the mileage reimbursement to sixty-five point five cents. That's IRS. So be, at this point, will we, can we agree? I mean, we approve.
Second. All in favor?
Hey. It's the ADP contract, so this is a contract to outsource the processing of our payroll. I can't find anything wrong with it, we can't find anything wrong with it. It has, I, I just can't even tell you well, it does, so electronic timekeeping, electronic wage statements, W two, so being all the tax filings, benefit processing, reconciliations, electronic onboarding, and it will save us about point six thousand dollars a year as opposed to having a payroll clerk.
Has Anthony had a chance to go over it?
Anthony?
Yes. And the only thing that I saw was possibly a little bit of concern that they have the right to use, they have the right to use subcontractors if they're outside of the management process payroll. You know, I mean, I don't know, I mean, they're subject to the same privacy restrictions that any in-country, just.
You're not going to convince me that.
And that's why, that's why, the contract says they're subject to the same privacy restrictions, but under the contract, they have the right to pay our payroll information and send it to wherever ladies appropriate to process the payroll, and then the other thing I saw on there that was troubling was there's actually a provision that directs us whether our remedies are in line with the privacy breach. Which basically says the parties are supposed to track the motion agreement as to what caused the breach, and if ADPs have fought, then we can walk away from the agreement.
Oh, so you mean there's no further remedy than?
Well, that's what it, that happens.
I mean, frankly, there's nothing that anybody can do other than offer some kind of, you know, credit, you know, assistance, mitigation.
The question that it raises in my mind is, is this just in there as a precaution, or is this in there because something's happened? Because it's unsure, contracts are evolving in nature, and they usually will change based on events that happen between the parties. I mean, I believe ADP has good reputation, but just, that's just something that jumped out at me. Otherwise, I don't have any issues with a contract.
Well, on one hand, there really is nothing we can do to keep our data from being exploited by foreign government if, if it's being held over there, I mean, that's just how it is, I mean, and it doesn't say where overseas, on the other hand, almost all of our data, if you have a credit card or bank account or anything, is being held overseas somewhere because people are contracting it out.
The contract does say that it will be backed up. Subcontracting may have to notify us.
Okay, so they have to notify us, and we'll know where it's going.
Well, that's, that's.
That means more to me, like, it is different between India and China, to me.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so.
So before they do that, they notify us, and then what if we say that?
We can object.
We can object, and then what, what from there?
Oh, I think basically what it says is they'll try to make alternative arrangements. Where.
Well, there are only a hundred and fifty of us, so it's not like, you know.
Well, it's what kind of thing you that.
As long as there's another avenue, they have to notify us, that, to me, that's, that's a blessing to them.
Well, um, and, and Ruth has told us all about this software before, and it sounds like it's, it's, first of all, it's saving us a position, full-paid position. And it's also, we just had issue after issue after issue with payroll, especially where we have shift workers and things like that, it's just been awful. Um, for our staff, I mean, it's more seamless for the people who are getting paid for the most part. Um, but it, it, it will eliminate a lot of room for error, it also allows for electronic tracking of hours, where people can log in on their phones and stuff like that, and. See, it was made a point, our software company that we have now, has a way to process their payroll. But we use their software to process ours, well, so. Well, that's what we're taking by events, thank you, Gia. All right, well, I move that we approve the contract.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
When is the address of that new contract due?
Uh, we'll need to address that in March, basically, we'll cancel the payroll part of that.
We have to do that.
Ninety days.
Yeah, the contract automatically leaves, you know, it's against July first, and we have to do it in a ninety-day termination notice.
Okay.
Well, as long as it's, as long as it's provided by people first. And what Ruth was saying was, we're going to have to use them for some things.
Yeah, they still have our budget and accounting software, so they just don't want to have these payroll part.
All right, number four, I want to talk a little bit about, you know, the, the old Fayetteville Police Department. Yeah. Give a recap on it. The county commission staff, we had some staff that was not handicap accessible. The probation office needed some room for expansion. So the county commission decided to purchase the Fayetteville Police Department. And me and Ruth went to Judge Ewing and Judge Blake. And I gave him the spiel of what I thought should be done, and then Judge Blake gave me his spiel of what he thought it should be done. And so then we talked to the sheriff, now we've all come to an agreement that the sheriff is going to take the detective bureau, correct me if I'm wrong, sheriff, you had the conversation, yes. Is going to take the detective bureau over to the new Fayetteville Police, old police department. And probation is going to be moved to your office, all your office, there's enough room you all over there, and there's enough room for them down there, then we're going to bring our staff, some of our staff that's not handicapped accessible, into probation office. And that's the way all this went down, I just want everybody to know about it, out there.
Yeah.
So.
And we just had no choice but to get additional space, I mean, everyone in the room probably knows how, how difficult it is to get space in the town of Fayetteville and proximate to the courthouse in particular, and, and where the Supreme Court has added all these, it's added three additional probation officers to, in its programming between drug court, family treatment, what's the other one called, Anthony, teen?
Teen court.
Teen court. Um, so, so now we don't, and the Supreme Court's answer to the question when we said, where are we supposed to do about space? Well, double up these offices, and they're really like tiny offices, there's no way to human being, it's hard enough for a probation officer and the probationee to fit in the office, let alone two probation officers and two probationees, so that was just untenable. So, so we were put in a position where we did have to find additional space, and we, we explored all the options, and I do believe we are going to be seeking some sort of compensation from the Supreme Court, it'll probably turn us down, but.
It's a good place to be trapped.
But we, but we are going to attempt to try to get some compensation, whether it be some kind of lease agreement for our space, or something like that, just to get some help with, you know, having had to do this due to its initiatives and not our own. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Miss, um, when do you think all this will take place, and we can, or, you know, I have the contract suddenly, and all these other things?
Maybe we should just sit and have a meeting between Judge Blake, probation, and you.
Okay.
And we need to have a set down and just talk about it. And Ruth, can you arrange that for all of them together? Do that? We're all on the same page, yeah, I agree.
Thanks.
She said we'll sign the purchase agreement shortly.
Oh, okay.
So we'll get that in a minute.
I was nine fifteen.
Oh, um, should, should we also go ahead and vote for you to sign the banking documents today, because that closing is?
That's all right.
Is that today? I think it's at one. It's today at one.
Yeah, so he has to do all that, he can do that after the meeting, by any time.
Yeah, but we should probably just make.
Yeah.
But he can sign on, sit for the whole commission.
Okay. There's only a hundred and twenty-eight places to sign.
Yeah, so I, I move that the commission and power commissioner Luises to sign all of the banking documents related to this purchase.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Angela?
Ready?
Yep. Before Angela starts, I asked her to get with Jamie, and could you pull that map up?
You're going to do it.
I have to put, put a map together for the graduated buildings, the properties, the properties, and I'll buy them different colors. The properties that have been demoed, the properties we're going to vote on today, whether it's business, residential, in-state or out-of-state property owners. Just so it gives the county commission a reference of what is going on through the county, a better reference by a map. Also, I've asked Eddie, I was going to ask her, has James been put the, what it costs for each piece of property, the, the demo, demo? So it gives us a reference on what the cost is, I'm asking Eddie also put together on there what the value of that property is. So the county commission's got to have an outlook of everything with the cost and the value of the property. So you'll pull that up, and then we'll let Angela have that.
Recording in progress. Happens. I had it set, and then it.
Still doing that whole.
Okay. I'm going to pull up the case pictures first, and then we'll go back to the map. I'm pulling up case pictures right now, this is how I had to do it, okay, yeah, I had it set up, and then it got placed. A big map, just have to make myself a. So while she's doing that, what I'm going to do today is I'll read you the case number, and she'll have to picture up to have better, better visual. All the cases, basically what happened thus far is, beautification committee has met, we all voted as committee, I'm not only committee, I'm liaison, but they voted that they felt it was a vanity selected. We sent property owner a notice of violation, we gave them thirty days to respond. Either A, they responded, that they were going to do something, they'll be, and then we, some of these we've sent to a group final notice. So we have tried to contact, and I'll go through each case to let you know each scenario. And then you guys as commission, if you feel as though you agree that it's been updated, you will vote to start the legal process, and then we'll, I will create a file, and I will pass it on for a prosecuting attorney to serve and to boil. And I'll give a name, if he doesn't know who it is. That's kind of what happens today, so that's the map that Jamie created, there is a paper map that's bigger, but they're, they're all colored, those are the properties that beautification committee has voted on. Now, like we discussed before, there's probably two hundred more out there that we have not identified. We just started back a few months ago, so we're hitting the feet on the ground, but this is just a visual on, actually, most of our property owners are in-state. Oddly enough, when I went through the tax tickets, most of them are actually in-state property owners. I'm ready with your. Okay, so if you want to start, you've got to go back to case one. That's the same. There we am, okay. Okay, so the first case we have is Barry Blackburn. Um, the physical address of thirty fifty-two Scarborough Road. Um, this was a commercial building at one point in time, it has been burned since twenty eighteen. I've sent several letters to Mr. Blackburn, and then that was the scene of the incident. There used to be a local home on the property, but it didn't seriously burn a couple years ago. So it sits like that as of this week.
Okay, last night, I walked, I drove by there, and the door that's open, there were bodies stumbling out of that door. And it's been going on for the last four weeks. Um, it's nothing but a drug haven, at one time it was man's grocery store. Uh, there's also a boat that's sitting behind the picture that you can't see, that's been sitting there for fourteen, fifteen years. Um, and then that trailer's over to the right-hand side, that's just all the debris's piled up, it was never picked up.
The last cable that lived there, but.
We'd like to take, I don't, I won't take recess, can you talk for a minute?
Um, while we, um, let's, yeah, I'd like to move that we go into executive session and get advice from legal counsel.
All right, it's nine twenty-eight, we just come out of executive session with no decisions made. You want to continue?
Yeah, so, um, it's not sharing again. That's fine. Brace yourself for the. No, I think that would be, I got rid of that.
Hey, Angela, do you want us just to vote on the whole block, or each one individually?
That's up to you guys, I mean, if you think all of them are going to be issued. I think the whole lot.
Okay.
Okay. So we discussed, um, case number one, the next case is case ten, addressed to six two eight five, in the trail of Charleston Heights. This property has been sold about six times in the last eight years, it was burned. Um, the current property owner does want to remodel, but it has sat in that state for two years, with no remodeling done. It's completely burned, I mean, it's a stone building, but whole inside is. Are these, you said, no, are these people who didn't respond to your letters? This property owner did respond wanting to remodel, but that was two, two years ago, and not a thing has done, I mean, he was, the property owner, he was going to do it the summer, and it still sits in this shape.
Yeah, what, what is that?
Stone.
Stone, yeah, it's a stone now.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it can be remodeled, but there's been no one way or the other. I didn't flip to the next page. Um, case twenty-six and case one seventeen is ninety-six, Hope Loop and one twenty, Hope Loop. Um, these properties sit side by side, they're right behind Flashville Side, the lookout post office.
Yeah.
Um, both of these properties have sat in the state for several years. The property owner has contacted us, they want to move back into the property. But once again, there has been no action, litter control has been to the property several times, several years ago, we even had someone remove a junk vehicle, and it sat in that. And there are two different parcels, thus the need for two different cases. Um, so, yes. Um, case thirty, this is five point five tax rent road, this sits directly across from the cold loadout, they, um, not done anything to it, I'm pretty sure that the property owner is deceased. Um, but they signed their registered mail cards, but not a single, no response at all, this isn't out of state property. Um, the next case is case one fourteen and case one fifteen. It wants five five three eight Legends Highway, the other one's five five two two Legends Highway, this property is two parcels. Um, it sits there in the top, right across where you go up to the nursing home.
Yep.
Um, it has got probably thousands and thousands of pounds of clothes. It was a hoard situation, no one's lived there. But, um, property owner rented it to somebody and has sat in this condition for several years. And case one sixteen, four oh three one Deepwater Mountain Road, it's Fayetteville, because that's the number one, but it's what you guys know as Kincaid. It sits right on sixty-one, um, it has sat in this firm condition for about seven years, so no no response from the property. And the last case of the day is case one three six, sixteen Price Hill, it is what they know as County Line Bar. Um, we have dealt with this one for quite a few years, it was burned several years ago, it is, it is on the county line, right? Property owner, as you see, tried to sell it, one time he did, wanted to rebuild, but we see the opening, it's a basement. There's about three hundred pyres that were involved, hadn't taken out, it's become a community building. So those are the ones that we have currently, that we have tried, no action, no baby steps, not going. Has anybody taken a look to see if any of them are salvageable, or if they all need to just be torn down, or? The only one that possibly would be the one in Charleston Heights, I mean, if you got a.
Could you pull that one up on the map? I, I. That's the stone one, yeah.
Yeah, it would be down in Charleston Heights.
Yeah. But if I remember correct, that one was burnt all the way on the inside.
It was, you'd have to have an engineer to tell you if the stone was affected, I don't know that, and I mean, for the structure.
I mean, it, you'd have to, and you don't have pictures all the way around it.
I do not normally, because we don't the way that previous part, you actually have to get a search warrant to go on some premises, so most of the time, until we get that, if we really needed it, um, we don't go and private.
Sheriff deputy, what do you, I mean, chief, what do you think? Do we have to have a search warrant to go on the property and take photos of it?
That's what I asked Anthony.
Who's the house invited out for this?
Yeah, there's another one, we'll be.
It's a, it's a statue.
And changed to where.
Let me take a closer.
Beautification committee, yeah, they searched.
Oh, we can get them, a lot of these are so far beyond.
Well, this is the only one, yeah, and I understand.
The only questionable one.
Yeah.
But not because, I mean, I don't know, it sat like that, I mean, I would have pulled a fire before, it has sat like that for several years of rain, and, well, I mean, I don't.
I mean, I, I, it's, it's a stone, it's a stone, stone building, and I think it's pretty on the outside, I mean, I'd just hate to, I'd like to see if it's salvageable.
But the property owner honestly bought it on a land contract from someone else, he does have to be, but financially, he would not have the means to.
Even with the process of what I think we talked about.
And he wouldn't have the finance, I don't, yeah.
Because there is a, there is a, some grants out there for people that want to remodel their home.
It is not his property.
Okay, then that's different, it's not his.
Yeah, he was not property owner at the time. It's been sold like, it got sold at a tax sale, and then someone purchased it at a tax sale, and then did a land contract, and now he owns it after land.
Okay.
Does he, does he live in state? Yes, in town. Okay.
That'd be the only one I would question.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only one, don't know that it really is, but I mean, it is a possibility of all the ones, that's the only ones.
All right, well, I'd like to offer a motion that nine of the ten, with the exception of case number ten, be sent a letter with options, and having them appear in front of us on March the first.
So, you want to take one, so they, our ordinance, which is state ordinance, there's like a, I call it a complaint form, it may be part of those, but there's a complaint form that Anthony's office or prosecutor's office that says, you know, we tried to contact you, he has to serve it either via the sheriff or certified mayor, whatever that rule, or. Um, so that is a whole part, but I don't know what, how much time he needs to prepare all these cases.
We're just talking about this one, just the.
Yes, it's a complaint letter, Tom, they have so many days to get on your guys' agenda.
Um, if you guys also want as part of this to either send them a letter offering them the option of transferring ownership to the county?
I would like to do that.
Yes.
The other two commissioners, that's fine.
I mean, I'm not saying instead of.
Yes.
I, I'm worried about the liability.
If we're demoing it anyway.
Well, when are we going to demo it, though, that, we don't have a contract in place yet.
They go ahead and transfer it over, we can take the process then.
I, I'd like to have somebody under contract to do demos, and so we have, because, here's my concern, like, you know, those flood properties we didn't want to take over? The ones that they didn't mitigate enough to get the hazards taken care of, like this one business that Angela said, if you walk in the door, there's a basement there, they're dumping into the basement area, and somebody falls in that. And then we get held liable, because we're the owners.
I would be able to.
Well, I'm just thinking out loud here.
If, if they, if they.
I mean, I'm not telling you, it's not somebody's time.
We could have a, we could have a. We can have a period in order to, to just transfer to happen, to get a bid on, on demo, at a certain time, get it done. We have to, don't we have to send bids out for the demo anyway?
Yeah, we're going to have to do that, but the part, the problem is, I don't know how we're going to be able to get bids, you know, we're going to have to have a, have a authority, you don't.
Well, if they agree. Well, if they agree.
Yeah.
If they, if they agree to do what you're talking about, doing transfer it to the county, there's a process that takes anyway to do that. We have to go to meetings to agree on that.
You're thinking we'll have enough time to get the demo set up or?
As long as we're prepared to execute.
Right.
Whatever.
Even if we had to meet spec, maybe just come in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or take a sec, make a decision. Okay, I'll prestate my motion again. I make a motion to send them a notification letter and have them appear in front of us on March the first, twenty twenty-three. I think they, is that the way the process is? I think you send them a letter.
So they, they have to request. They have ten days. I'm pretty sure once they get served the notice, whether it's certified mail or if you're in county, if they're department, you know, in county. But I believe the ordinance says they have ten days to request a date here in front of you guys. And if they don't, then you guys can set a date.
I just want to make sure it was right.
If the letters went out, so we're, so he's already talking, he's talking March first. Well, but March, March first gives plenty of time for the letters to go out, the ten days to pass. And that could just be the day that we choose to set it. Is that a, how's that agenda looking that day? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if it, I mean, I don't have a problem with it being March first, given the amount of time between now and when. We have six weeks. That should be plenty of time.
I'll give.
For everything to take place.
I'll give Anthony all the cases and I'll try to go ahead and give them the means as much as I can do.
Then we could just put in the letter that, you know, if, if they respond, the date will be March first, just to give the heads up so they plan.
And then that time, you know, they can complete their case basically. I'm going to say.
And if they call and say they can't do March first, we can put them on a different gen, as long as they're responding. You know, that's really the point. So, uh, so I second John's motion.
Go on favor.
Aye.
We're a little late.
I told you, you can't shut the lawyers up, even if you're running.
Yeah. All right. We're late, but, um, nine thirty. Stacy.
Good morning.
Good.
That's the only one.
Out of the time to work together, you may just. Uh, so thank you for the opportunity to come before the finish today. Uh, I'm not here to ask for anything, just here to provide some information. Uh, my name is Stacy Thomas. I'm a community coach with the West Virginia Community Development Hub. And just wanted to kind of make the commission aware that we are going to be working in three Bay County communities with our hub cap program um, over the next two and a half years. Uh, so if you're not familiar, where does the West Virginia Community Development Hub? Uh, we are a statewide nonprofit that works to help uh, typically small rural communities, identify the, um, goals for, you know, their improvement. Uh, hub is one of the programs that we do want us to do that. This will be the fifth iteration of that program. We operated this program in twenty-seven communities in the past and worked in over sixty communities, uh, in the state over the last twelve years. And, um, so with this program, we're going to be working in Oak Hills, Smithers, Montgomery, Bay County, as well as two additional communities. I've already been to the county commission of all the Bay County communities and have their support. Um, so again, I'm just here to, you know, make the commission aware of the activities in the community, uh, aware of the activities that are, are going on with, um, you know, within this program. So, uh, this round of hubcap is funded by the USBA and our, we have a couple of areas that we'll be working on priority with that. So first, um, each community will work with the West Virginia Hive and the Nover George, uh, Regional Development Committee uh, to work, learn how to better work with their EDAs and, you know, build those relationships, obviously, kind of Beltran, Kirkry already have that related to uh, in Bay County, but they'll also, they'll have working force, business development opportunities with these communities and providing some training um, through, uh, a couple of their programs. Um, we'll also be doing a couple of placemaking projects in each community and then each community will identify a technical assistance project that they'll work on. Um, really for the betterment of their community. It's a grassroots, community-led initiative. The community will decide, um, you know, what the project is and we open the teams up to anyone, um, in the community. We don't necessarily follow geographical boundaries because we recognize that someone who might live, you know, in between Fayetteville and Oak Hill might identify more with the hill and want to be involved there. So we really welcome anyone that, to be, uh, to be part of our team. Um, through this, we also, you know, hope to develop some leadership capacity with the community theme so that they can be able to do this work long term. Um, like I said, we've had a lot of success with hubcap over the last, um, few years. This has been.
What are some examples? Can you give us?
Yeah, just some examples. So, um, uh, we just wrapped up hubcap four where we worked at the Mon Forest Towne Communities. Their focus, we're working with six communities and their focus was recreation development in all those communities. So, um, for example, uh, the community of Lawland then, uh, had a bike study that was part of their project because they're trying to be a better bike community and they're working on trail development. Uh, like Sulphur Springs used their funding to work with a consultant to develop a pump track, uh, to help for skill building and, and bike trails, uh, as well. Elkins, um, completed, uh, the design phases and planning for a multi-million dollar riverfront development project. And now, um, we're assisting them as well as some other organizations in finding the funding to, to do that project. Uh, the city of DeKalin was able to, uh, do some, they just want to clean up an assessment for a former pond from the beginning of railroad and make that into recreational sites. They now have some client launches in a few years. And, um, then, yeah, really what was, uh, an underutilized asset in their community is now a recreational asset and they're kind of connected like trail there. So, um, yeah, there's, you know, a kind of a thing. But animals, one of our first communities, they have Jawbone Park where this was started twelve years ago. They now hold first Friday concerts there, have food trucks and a lot of events, um, throughout the city. So, uh, you know, those are just a few of the examples, um, that we've had in, in the recent years. So basically our process is we work with the community by hosting monthly community meetings to, um, really engage anyone that wants to be part of things and focus on that, that project development. Uh, we usually don't do a couple of projects. Did each community identify as a big one? We provide some financial assistance for that. The communities are also providing a twenty-five hundred dollars match. It's kind of their buy-in that also goes back toward, um, their project. So total over twenty thousand dollars to be invested in technical assistance funding in these communities over the next two years. We also work to provide them a, a vista to help with some of their projects and, uh, things that they're working on, um, if they choose to, to get that route. So, um, next month, we'll start working with communities to have kickoff events in each community where we introduce this to the public large, celebrate some of the successes these communities have had because these great Bay County communities are really ahead of the game. From what we see, a lot of communities in our program, they've already had a lot wins. They have a lot going on. And I know when I was at the, uh, the Montgomery Commission meeting, um, great weeks ago, the commission provided Montgomery's money for their riverfront development project. And that you guys are best in these communities as well. We just want to work alongside the work that's been done and help, you know, to grow that. And our goal is, you know, always to just build a leadership and make communities, um, you know, that's a good thing. So I just wanted to comment, you know, make the commitment aware, like you should, you know, be part of any of our teams. We'll certainly, uh, broadcasting this, you know, publicly, sharing it publicly. My email address is also at the bottom. I coordinate and lead, um, this program. Uh, and I'll also be coaching three, at least three communities. So hesitate to reach out. I want to give you the opportunity to ask me questions at this point.
Does this program, is this just from municipalities or can counties qualify too?
Yeah, this, this particular one, uh, it's just municipalities. One of the things that we have to have within the program is we have to have the communities identify before we submit the application for funding. Um, I know, uh, so we just have an application period that's for county line program. And we'll have that again for the end of this year. Um, it's in conjunction with the national certification of counties, uh, that is known whole communities. Um, but I know there are a couple of other Bay County communities that aren't going to be, you know, in that, Mount Hope, Fayetteville. We will also have some other programs that will be rolling out over the next year. We were part of, um, an EDA award, uh, last fall that was, you know, pretty widely touted. And so part of that will also have an accelerate program, which is a planning and development program where we'll be operating and seeking, uh, communities just from Southern West Virginia. So that might be a good opportunity for, um, for Fayetteville or Mount Hope or, you know.
We have other communities that aren't as well funded as, as our larger, you know, Fayetteville and Oak Hill are our largest, um, cities. And, but instead we have Mary instead of Mary.
One more.
We have, well, there's more than one more. We have Menne Bridge and they, yeah, the Paks, Thurmond.
Yeah, a lot of incorporating cities, a lot more than those.
Dolly Bridge, yeah. So, um, anyway, I just wondered, do the, do the municipalities have to apply for this program or do you guys seek them now? I mean, how do you identify who qualifies?
So a lot of times it's, you know, communities have reached out to us for help at some point and we, you know, have built those relationships. So we do offer a responsive coaching, um, to anyone who wants, you know, just help on kind of a one-off basis or wants to learn more. So you can also, uh, Mary, I'll give you the, you can also email about responsive coaching and we'll, you know, talk with you. Uh, you know, about that information as well and kind of, kind of creates that pipeline to help. And we have a lot of free tools on our website as well. We have our Kickstarter community series, which, um, really has a guidebook of online lessons for communities and how they can do this, um, you know, on their end, because we recognize we can all work in so many communities at once. In the past, we typically worked in twelve, fifteen communities a year. This year we're working on working thirty-one. We're really, you know, expanding a lot. We still know there are more communities that come to work with us. So, um, you know, we want to, we want to support those communities, uh, as much as we can.
Have you emailed them or tried to contact them through email in any way to show that the support, that the support's there?
I was going to ask as, as a, on the same, along the same note, um, if you have a letter or something that you could put together to inform that we could send our mayors and let them know how to reply for the programming? That would really help. Is that what?
Yeah, basically, that's what I'm doing. Contact them to show them, yeah.
Yeah, and then we could send that out, um, to them.
Yeah. Uh, also, if you want, if you send me your email addresses, I can also have you added to our weekly newsletters. And every week in our newsletter, we have opportunities, um, and so the applications to take part in some of these programs. And we have some individual capacity building programs for citizens called up. It's always in our newsletter and, you know, the opportunity to connect with them. So.
Can we go through a list of all people? Oh, you can. Okay, sorry.
Say accounting commission email, don't we? We did. So we could just give you that one email, but if you could also.
All the others. Municipalities.
Well, I think they could sign up individually if they want it.
If you, if you don't mind taking a short two-hour drive, the, uh, parking in Buchanan on Friday is amazing. Um, I built the EDA building up there, an angle to the park and. I'll do, okay. And, uh, like the building in many colors. But, uh, it's, uh, it's amazing to see the amount of people that come out and enjoy the festivities. Um, it also, they've tied in the farmer's market with it and, uh, you know, they'll have anywhere from fifty to a hundred and twenty people religiously every Friday out.
Yeah, we see that a lot. Um, you know, at the market, it's kind of events, you know, we've worked in community talent and one of the fall, five hundred people talent, uh, Princeton, health. We've worked in Smithers, Montgomery previously too, if you're a whole big program in twenty twenty. So it was, um, we're getting really connected with, with there, North America. Uh, and I'm glad to be coming back to the commission and, uh, to set a map and kind of update you on what's going on with each of the communities and, and keep you involved. And, um, yeah, continuing to provide support.
I really appreciate your coming and letting us know because a lot of people from the state level do work in our county and don't let us know and we find about it quicker. And we always like to know because if there's something like this in this case that might benefit other municipalities, we like to let everybody in. You know, some, somehow, you know, some of the staffs and are able to identify these things more easily than others.
Yeah, we'd like to, you know, take part in any of our meetings here or those little meetings as that is and be part of any of our themes or, or that profit. I mean, I've seen, I'm from Richwood. My community went through the program a couple of years ago. We were, uh, the year we were in, in the program was around business development and, um, and that's been a real good lately. There's a whole lot, a whole lot of new locally owned businesses and, you know, it's at forty-five in the last five years.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Obviously, you know, we don't see that in every community. Princeton was part of that as well. And they've had three dozen new businesses in the last five years, just on merchantries. So, um, yeah, we feel really respectful with our programs and obviously I've seen the impact and, and my community income back and it's also been a.
Well, those are good locations. Those are good locations. We just have more.
Yeah, you do. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Well, uh, I'll look forward to getting the, the emails and, and sharing that. But if you guys have any questions, we'll hesitate to reach out and look forward to continuing to work with you. And I'll, uh, schedule to come back probably sometime in the late summer or early fall, but I'll stay tuned how things are going.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. All right. Shooting range. I guess we're going to talk about bids for the shooting range. Requesting bids for the shooting range. Does Sheriff Bradley, you want to talk about it? Give us this.
Chief, definitely producing one of the handling that here received a bid. They still, we get to the commission. Um, I know there's some people here, cause of what's going on and I talked to them, my whole, that is the owners and on the boundaries and stuff. Um, I think, I don't know how much you want to go into it. I, you know, commissioners, I think, we're involved. So, but, um, just to give everybody a little outline of what's been going on. Approximately eleven years ago, the sheriff's office strange was taken from them. And questions asked, have we been searching? The day I took those to the office, that is one of my priorities that I've worked with commissioners for a while on this. Um, we search everywhere. We found property and bought the properties down, you know, had money to pay for it. Um, we had another location that there was going to be myself and Commissioner Brimley even contacted forestry department and county paid for Aradon to come in and do diagrams and noise tests and yada, yada, yada. And it was one of the timber that's laying approximately. They beat you by three. It was ten came up and not this commission, I'm not going to say this commission. Um, they raised pain about it. The other did and they said, oh, I don't want to put you down there. Okay, so we're back to where I'm at now. No place to go. The question was asked, can we use the boy scout? I should be questioning, I let y'all know that too. Um, yes, we, we do, but it's an act of Congress to get on here. Um, it's not like I can go, Debbie, you want to go practice today or our SWAT team is training, you go shoot. Can't do it that way. We got to call them month, two, three months in the back. So we need range for this many days, fall time stuff. I say code, we have to fall time this twice a year, not very much, one W daylight and one W low light. And we do that. Um, and, and prior, I didn't talk about the location we live in now, we even paid commission. I did. I talked to the deputy sheriff association and stuff. This is not going to be an everyday, that are western shootout. Going around, you know, it's not going to happen that way. One, my budget, and if you all, any of y'all hunting here? You don't have the rounds right now. I get ten thousand dollars to purchase rounds and we got to carry so many on our side. And that's our shotgun, our rifle and my pistols. But we bear minimum bones on that. So it's not like every day, woo-hoo, we'll be down there shooting and stuff. Um, and we told the other ones of the group. Um, and we told the other ones of the group and the commission also, we would work out and say, for example. I could put out, tell my chief deputy put out, if anybody wants to go practice shooting today, here's the date and time you could go. I'm gonna use Wednesday, for example, like that. From ten o'clock Wednesday morning to three o'clock Wednesday afternoon, range is gonna be hot. That means people will be down there shooting. Um, we were notified, commission and I can let the county park board or whoever's, we if this goes through, we will be doing qualified. And now, that's gonna be a lot of pain banging, because you got thirty some deputy sheriffs that we have to shoot, shoot, that's a fault. Um, so we be shooting. Um, and that's our rifles, that's our top guns, and that's our pistols. So we, I'm at the point now. People up here with it. And and she knows, she called me at the gym and it was, hmm, and I'm pretty serious, we friends, I'm a straight shooter. But everybody says they support us, big county deputy sheriff, one hundred percent, they support you sheriff, you're doing a great job. And then ten years without range. Ten years that my guys don't have their own range. We went, somebody asked me about plum orchids, we knew that. But if you can go to plum orchid, it's a public shooting range, you can throw in twenty people already shooting. Where that shoot. We went down in Montgomery, up there on the old landfill, shot down on my deputies, tell his knee wide, it was pretty close to plastic where we shoot at night. Um, and it's a long way to. We went to the fire association, whatever, putting in their stuff and asked them if we could put range down there. They said yes, but then citizens don't say, oh, they went to the distance, now we're going, they're gonna shoot me, but nobody wants to shoot me. But I, George, you win the fifth pitch to ban, y'all gonna say, where's my deputy's at? I get emotional, because I get mad, I'm not trying to be mad, I'm trying to stay calm. But. On the other hand of that, if we train properly, if we shooting, we qualified and doing things right by state code, then we liable. All this right here, and myself included. I have my range officer who wrote a letter three years ago to the county commissioner, maybe longer, saying. You ain't following policies, you not following state code, we do not have a range to qualify. So liability's not on here. So that's where we at today. I mean, my chief, like I said, I turned over to him, goes, I'm tired of getting punched in the head. And that's why I feel like every town, county move towards something, we take a guilt punch right into that. Um, I went to you, matter of fact, the college one, and I said, I would love to meet with y'all. Never got a call, but then I never were back, failing, what's he doing in there, nobody could do that, which I understand. He was gonna do, we gonna try to arrange. And then I said, hey, this is a good opportunity for money to come in, because their money go out, that they gonna have bow shooting or something like that, but we can work together. Never heard nothing back from the body. Anyway. That's where we at, that's what's going on, got any questions from me on it, ask me. Um, like I said, the chief deputy went out, mission said bid, they answered by code, we got bids on it, they seal. We got a map, I've got a book this big. The paradon did, I think calculation, don't you have a copy of it too?
I haven't seen it.
You got somewhere too, so, I mean, blueprints, it's not gonna be big, is that one, because we don't have anything to say, but that's what we got.
I have a question.
Yes.
How long does a range, how long does a simple range have to be, like when we're standing here.
We, we.
How long does the range have to be? Um, ready stand the version.
What a present, what a pleasant uh weapon we're using. The place that we have down in Parkville.
We only go outside of the yard range. Okay, and where this range is, I mean, it's a new.
But you wanna have it so you can use any gun there?
It is set up there, but ninety percent of time we do it on our hands, uh, and we have sort of our RV or our AR platform. And we can zip about a department.
You know that area back there where there's some people park. And it's a creek on your left, and you're going back through there. And you clear a point, there's an arbitrary point, your property line comes down across this, that's our thing. And it's not that far about. Are you gonna be shooting left, left across that into the hillside?
I know they need.
You go back there and I was found this property line, it's not that far back. Oh, and get your make, but you love you shoot that. Far as I know, yeah.
Hey, uh, chief or sheriff, either one, you say there's a day shot and a night shot that you guys have to do in order.
Don't like state code, yes.
Okay, all right, so if I remember correctly, the park opens at ten thirty for the public. So is there any way you can shoot from like six in the morning till ten thirty? When public starts coming in, you stop shooting and then shoot at nighttime? Oh, eight.
I I can't, I can't answer that.
Well, you'd have a year for it to do.
Yes, sir, it can be done.
Okay, thank you.
To run, to operate a safe range, there's some things that we don't need. With our range office, which I don't wanna let you do. We have a flag, the red flag, it's raised, that means that frame. If that flag is lowered, that means that range is full. Okay, and what we do, we have a spot shooter, so we get in the range, we gotta go a spot. Make sure there's nobody around our area in there. You go around or walk around, once it's cleared, the flag is raised, you can get ready to pop. Our deputies, when they show up, I say show up in cold rain, that means when they get out of their car, they know they're wet and running, I'm like, what up, you do that much? That's why we got one thing, okay? And a lot of things we get into is, we're trained a little bit different in this thing with your guns, the plum orchid, you know. Okay, there's several different places, stances, tackle sound, stuff we gotta do, and the law. I mean, trigger reset, I mean, one hard and all hard, moving hard, moving hard. But you have to have a natural burn, and that is in play already, that's where there's no, you're the chance. Cause if I'm not on the line with the guy that's shooting, I think it would be rich, I think we'll be up on that line. So we gotta be in a safe, one of the things. And another thing is. I have some very good structure. Okay, and all these PDs, and we train specific PDs, they come and we have certified for training for cars.
Municipal.
Yes, like answer P D at home, Stewards, Montgomery, all these guys, they wanna keep our certification. And instead of asking it out to other different counties, they come to us and they need to qualify. So then we gotta find a place, call the boy scouts, and it's like, ah. Matter of fact, we took our S R T team to system field. The training system goes to the top county range, we didn't have nothing suitable for special response teams, gotta be a little bit trained, a little bit higher. A little bit higher than the other one, because they use different type of weapon, weapon. And it's just that, we have to get it out safely. So we have to work around their schedule, get our downfall. Is that a longer distance, bigger range? No, so what it is, I mean, they got, they have shoot out. And it's at their county park. That's where their range is at. Is there a range in North Bay Park?
So how, what's what's their schedule that they have shooting?
There is, they have a gate, they have.
I mean, what what's the schedule that?
Whenever they want. Whenever they want. Like if I had, if I hire you tomorrow, that's before I can give you this gun, you gotta go meet them qualifications with it. Cause we, we hire people, you know, eighteen, nineteen years old, that really is not, so another proper way to handle.
They don't come out academy like that.
No, they go train academy too, but for them to carry our weapon system after you train with them.
Okay.
That's a liability.
So, okay, so they do it anytime, it's not just twice a year. It may be, if you're hiring three people a week, maybe three times a week that they have to qualify.
If we hire three people, our guys, we take you straight to the range, we qualify, make sure you know how to handle it.
Okay, I just wanna clarify, cause that you said twice a year and that.
Well, by state code, it's twice a year, but if we do a new hire.
Yes.
Without, without, just like you're gonna check your background and everything, we're hiring you.
Yeah.
You gotta go out and shoot.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, when I asked him that.
It's different between a single ox and a double ox again. Exactly, we try. I have a question, um, you know, Mr. Boardman, there's a house right across.
Yes. Well.
Conversation with him and all.
We have not, because we didn't know where we stood.
Right, gotcha.
Okay, but uh also talk to Ruth, there's some curtains that we can. It it says, clothes is invested, that much time. And what it is, it would, that's a half portion, the other half is anything. The sheets are.
Yeah.
And make it go up, sit about.
Um, another question, you know, the uh, all the vehicles.
And it's a lot of.
I I mean, I know, I'm, I know historically, I mean, the park, that's been one of the part, uh, you would, you would take it actually.
Absolutely. And the answer with you, where this location is, I think he sold it down to there, and I think he gave away mobile brush, I think, mobile brush, yeah. Something like that, you know, the. And the proposal was, I had not. Be a large grabber, woman, there should be a gate there, I mean, so we, the main person he got set to that, forces. Church department for the range and also. We just right here, and yeah.
There's one of those, we'll let y'all know too, and I forgot. We also, I wrote a letter and the senator, the senate, um, to the senate department at the time. He presented us a check that just at a certain time, they're gonna take back from sixty eight thousand dollars. To go towards this range, for us a range, so, I mean, it's not coming from, well, I would say. It's kind of taxpayer's money, somebody's money, mistake.
Right.
But, you know, it's a good starting point for us to be able to give what's down, so just make sure you got aware of that. I forgot about it, maybe fifty, sixty thousand dollars you receive, and if you don't keep it for a certain time, where I understand, I can be wrong. The commission could ask, or myself, or the station, but you can set one out. And we're not gonna do a hole in the wall range. Okay, this represents the citizen and that's it. We wanna have a challenge. First, we'll do the base plan, we'll get in there and get happy. Then next year, like, set three, next year, maybe a little bit of honor to the ground. I mean, this, every year, kind of beautified up, that's where we can have a range system of us, except for our training. And you have to say at the bar, I mean, what we believe in, what we're all for, the government, they explain their logic.
Yeah, what would happen with the range? What would happen with the range as an actor? But but there is the firing for shooting range.
That is a ski, there's a, we were all firing range.
We've been down and started filming the trails, brought this plan, and on Sunday afternoon, it lights up. And it really dominates the whole experience being here.
We have, we have nothing to do with that.
Would that say, that was staying, part of that range was staying.
It's not, not.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, you know, I'm just like, I don't know anything about, I just know that uh, when you're down there and they're, they're busy down there. It's really loud.
Well, that.
And it's really kind of shadow.
And that's the commission deal with that one.
That uh, that club will not, will not allow a shotgun other than a ski, no rifles and no pistols.
Yeah, you can't shoot there, I'm just saying, if this range went in and happened there too, it was like. You know, it's kind of, kind of very.
I'm a volunteer, but I represent the disco community here, I built eighteen hole disco course in twenty seventeen at the park. Uh, the park is viewed, I think, a lot of people here are the same, there's a lot of great recreation opportunity, programming has been happening there and it's keep skinning the dog. So I think a main concern, especially from my user group, is that what the plan is gonna look like? What consideration would be taken for the dominant users of the park, and people going out there, walking the trails? Uh, you know, using the ponds, playing disco course, because they have pretty, uh, that, those activities design, but there's not a lot of interaction. Usually, the people who would say, for instance, need to have an area set up. So I think our concern, it's my concern today, is what kind of built in considerations could be discussed? Uh, in for the future, this could, if it becomes another, for all users, because it's our, it's the only eighteen hole course in the county. And it's uh, so people go there, lots of destination, but they try.
Yes, sir, and I, you know, and I get upset and throw up things. We're, we wanna work, we wanna work this too bad, you gotta look at both sides of it. And and, you know, we've been without for years, and and we're not getting our group training that we need to make our deputies. Be able to do their job with. Um, but, but that being said, all my deputy sheriffs, we've worked with, you know, everything, whatever, I think. And we could just sit down with this policy and say, well, we're ten charges more down, or say, for that, hey, we, we could do it here in advance. Saying, we gonna qualify this day. With a secondary, this is the rain down, or the go down, or whatever, we gonna qualify our day time, time at this period, and then that's what they're. We can set up once a week, once every other week, and say, hey, one, we moved down from Wednesday, ten o'clock to three o'clock. Uh, for that, all deputies here, wanna go down there and shoot, one of the range, gotta drop you down, they just take a little start, shoot them down. And say, on this day, it's gonna be your training day that you can go down there and shoot. And say, day with the S R T team, that they gonna go down and shoot, this is the day that you can train. Then that, again, that way, y'all would know the bands, everybody, again, go along and make everything happen.
I think, was it, I wanna, I wanna make sure, clarify something, was you asking how it can be utilized for the park as well? In the situation, is that what you was trying to ask?
The fisherman and the trail users, I know for my users, they have basically, it looks open, they have access to this facility, and it's common and it's very hot. So, for instance, if this range is part of the park, what considerations would be taken for the other users of the park? Is the bid for the range gonna put signage so that everyone's aware of what's going on, at what phase it's closed, that if they approach the park? Is there gonna be that kind of consideration that this goes in, rather than just it being the range itself? And how do I work with the park and other users, so everyone can be safe and enjoy their experience?
I'm just wanting clarification, what you was asking, and 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 could you also, when you answer that, could you uh elaborate how the other county did it with their shooting range at the park?
It's not gonna be. You ain't gonna have any, Uncle Bob and Billy Bob down there shooting each other. Because it's prolonged. Okay, and another thing is, there's gonna be proper signage, it's gonna be marked safely and a lot. And your houses are gonna be shooting through the hills. All right, and uh, when we get to long range, we barely, rarely rule, except for our sniper unit, it's gonna be really, really suppressed. And we wanna have guys smarter, make sure that nobody watching anything, it's just a lot of fires. But there's gonna be proper signage, there will be a fence, not a fence, but a gates and a flagpole. And when you enter the park, there'll be a flag in the parking lot, and both of them will there, so they'll listen, whenever it is. Parks, they're burning, if the flag is raised, I mean, that range off. And it's gonna be a flag if you can see. And uh, there's a lot of safety, cause number one is safety for us, and there's.
I think another thing, if we could sit down and come up with a plan, what they train would be, and that's something that's a county park, and you can put on there. Circle media and the, the commission could, I, I could, and whatever.
Can I speak, so just as the park director, I'm new to this, I'm still learning a little bit about this. I am here to one, support you guys, I can't imagine how frustrating it is to go on through this for ten years. Cause I know that a little bit of frustration I've had to try to implement things. And as, you know, I'm new to this role, I'm trying to put together security plans and come up with ideas and activities and programming for the park. So all I ask is that, yes, as we move forward with this, let, can we elaborate, can we talk? So all I ask is that, yes, as we move forward with this, let, can we elaborate, can we talk through it? When I saw you down at the park, I'm doing a report, and then in the meeting, you know, I will say, like, a little red flag in the back, my mind came up, I'm like, okay. You know, what's going on, so I just want to learn more, because I want to be able to work together. So I want the process to be a little bit more transparent. And there's certain things that the park's going to have to do, we're going to have to pour, this is an reminder, we're going to have to pour new concrete pad for our dumpster. We already are working on taking some of the old cars, putting them on the option, clean up, maybe, they removed getting a hundred and thirty tires recently, so. We are making steps to do some of that, we want to work with you guys, so that there's a schedule, so that we know. You know, we can tell people, you can't fish at the ponds right now. We want to know, where's that gate, is the yellow gate that's currently there, or is it further, so it's. I would, I'm here to advocate for some more community.
Okay, well, I want to make a couple.
Well, I was going to say, we can do that on a different time, I think we're running, I think we're running overtime. I think we're running overtime.
Things clear, though. Um, one is, we hadn't heard about it, wasn't on the agenda last meeting, we didn't hear about it until, um, Chief Purdue. I think meant to approach us after the meeting, just to float it by, you know, just to let us know it was coming. You know, so, i- i- it hasn't been out for public consumption until today. Okay, so that's one thing. Um, the train hasn't left the station, all we're talking about is R F Ps. Another thing is, we had an award from Senator Baldwin. And it was for, what, sixty, sixty-eight thousand dollars that we have a time crunch to spend it to, toward the range. Wherever it is, we have the current range that could be upgraded, that's near the kennels, and we have this, this new idea, but, but without having numbers. We don't know which way to go. What I do know is this. Um, everything Sheriff Fridley said is correct, they haven't had one, they've been trying to get one, we've gone from place to place to place, and they need one. Um, what I also know is, after some research, after meeting with the Kisslers yesterday. Um, we talked to, Jean and I talked to, um, Frank down at the Park Service, they have about fifteen officers in this area who do not have. A local range where they can qualify, they all go to Beckley, City of Oak Hill goes, um, to Beckley, Ansted goes to Montgomery, Fayetteville goes to Beckley. Everybody has to leave Fayette County to qualify, all of our law courses, nobody, the, and I'll tell you, the closer you are to your range, the more practice you're going to get. You know, so you want them to be close to their shooting range. And I'll tell you also, the, and I know this, the people opposed, you're concerned about this location, aren't opposing the shooting range at all. They are only concerned about the placement of it at the park. Um, and, and I had somebody suggest, does anybody know where the old Sanger Civil Airfield is? You know where that is?
I think at the bottom of Sanger Road, and that's where we was finding a helicopter looking at guys, killing that guy. If, if you go down the bottom, and it's a left. Yeah. And you, you know, the bottom, yeah, at the, the top there, that sits off on the left, there's a bunch of old Christmas trees up there.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's by a, a long wall.
Yeah, I don't miss its property, dude.
It belongs to, uh, shoot, used to be, used to be on grandmother's property, but, um. I can't, Barney, um.
Okay.
Barney Skinnit, yeah.
Somebody had suggested, somebody had suggested that, so. We, you know, if, if you have alternative ideas, we have a short suspense on figuring out what they are, and I mean, very short.
And I, and I got an idea also, I, I think number one, we need to move forward with this, and I want to also put a bid out. The bid you have, I don't think we requested a bid yet. I think we have to do that in the commission. Well, what I'm saying is, it wasn't in a meeting, was it in a newspaper for four days? When you said you have bids. Uh, but you have to, we have to authorize it.
Yeah, as a group.
We have to authorize it as a group, but I, but I have another, another option I've been thinking about since all this turmoil come up. Is, I also want to put a bid on getting an enclosement. Actually, a concrete build, a concrete building, I asked Ruth to look this up for me today.
A building for down at the.
I asked Ruth to look this up for me this morning. And she did, and in the same process of this bid. Well, what I'm saying is, I mean, I mean, what, what I'm trying to do is come up with a solution for everybody, and have another option for us to look at, we don't know the cost. But, at the same time, we put these bids out, we can also put a bid out, to have a building, uh, uh, put up. So the sound's enclosed, nobody will ever know there's any shooting going on there.
Well, we have potential sources of revenue in the other law enforcement services, D N R, the feds. Um, anybody wants, or any, and frankly, any personal, if a law enforcement officer wants to pay out of his pocket to shoot there. Could do that at discounted rates, you know, um, to help sustain it and maintain it, and even reimburse the county for some of the initial costs.
And maybe, I feel like. Maybe I should have mentioned this earlier, to keep all the conversation down, but I wanted to hear it.
Not for a law enforcement range.
One, one good thing, I know you want to give them the one, but you know what, um, also, some of the quotes I didn't see, when they took the one, the guy down, and he did it, and then they, when they regravel that whole road down, it makes up.
Yeah, they were going, yeah, I was going to tell them that.
Boss, let y'all know on that. And then, and, and if we're brought about Sanger in a different location, the only thing that scares me about that stuff, to be honest with you, when it's out of sight and out of mind. Out of sight and out of mind, when you go, if you go shoot through, everything goes out of mind.
Well, you still can get the analyze.
Yeah, we even got these ranges three years ago, that their range turned it down, and they broke into, so it all were hard.
Hmm.
Fair enough.
Mr. Crickshank.
The reasons they're not going near the fire, right, in Sanger Forest?
Yeah, people lives on, right, called the cement road.
Okay, uh, were they approached about all these sound barriers and things like that?
See, I'll be honest with you, we met with this so many different times, and so many different, it's been, blew it every time we met, it's all the same.
And I'll be honest with you, I, I talked to, talked to about four of them at one time about this, and there was not even any question, they said no. Yeah, well, I mean, I, that, that, the discussion with me was, no.
I just, I know, like I said, I know along before, I just want to speak very briefly on behalf of our board, um, we obviously have not met census, the special, I won't speak as the board. But I felt before him, we just didn't have that information, and I feel like today, he kind of more than.
Well, right, because it wasn't on the agenda, I mean, so that's, I know, you know, people tune in, and, and, and that was my bad, because I was running that meeting. And I let him raise it before we had closed the meeting, and I shouldn't have done that, because it wasn't on the agenda, it shouldn't have been before this body until it was. But, we do have an impetus, and, and, you know, our heart's in the right place to do it.
I, I think the sheriff addressed a lot of the concerns of the park board.
Okay, good, well, that's good, and, and Mara, I saw your hand up too.
I just wanted to say, just a couple of things, and first of all, I appreciate, like, I think. That we just startled each other, you know, the trail builders were startled when we learned. Mike was startled, like, we appreciate your time, Mike, and I appreciate your candor, we had very. Straight up conversation about, people come out of the woodwork, I'm like, yeah, like me, I just came out of the woodwork, going, now what? And after hearing about everything. Like Abby said, so much sympathy, and the rubber, too, right now, whether we support you or not, you have done so much to try to make it happen. And it's just clearly gone haywire in every way, and we are a cash grab county, and, um. I, I appreciate that Allison had time to talk, I appreciate that you had time to talk, it is just really contextualized the whole thing, so I'm not up here showing my ass, freaking out. So it seems to me, it's just going to be come down to sharing well, and sharing with space, and, um. We should, you guys, here's a question, just sort of ballpark, and I know you don't really want to answer it, but in terms of hours, and. If you would like to have that range reserved. And, and all I'm, there's a question that, once there was an established schedule, and everybody. At work, I don't see why, you know, so.
We can work.
Communication, like, it's been being.
Well, I didn't even know.
Yeah.
The trails. And, you know, that. Yes.
That's. PJ of board, remember, asking, potentially, could there be a tour of the area that?
Well, we have, it's on the map, and, um, we have a map around here somewhere, but I went out there, um, Jean took me out there yesterday, and it, interestingly, this location. The trail goes right around, it loops right around, it'd be right here, and if it had, if the building had four sides, well, that's not a four sided thing, um, here's the trail. So it's right in the middle of, of where that goes, but, that doesn't, I mean, I, I feel like we just need a little more information, but. Given this, the fact that we might be able to find other ways to help reimburse, we just need to. We have some, um, initial information on facilities, I think we do need. Um, to reapproach the fire association based on Mr. Crockshank's recommendation, that is a really good place for it. Um, and there's already noise there, as he pointed out, and we can soundproof this to make it less obnoxious, um.
What is the deadline?
We've.
I don't know, but I want to find out.
Well, I, I tell you, I would like to go ahead and move forward with voting on the bids, and get the process starting, some, no matter what. I mean, I, I think we ought to get some bids on leased. Start the process, and everybody can fight about it later.
We have to know what we want them to bid on.
Well, there's going to be a, one, I understand, they know what the bid needs to go out right there, they got bids and shouldn't have got bids. So we need to vote, right, right?
He knows. He knows what the specifications are, and we need to bid to the specifications.
Yeah.
Run it two weeks in a newspaper, and then open the bids up on, I gave you a note and a date.
The seven, the fourteen?
That is seventeenth of February, at our meeting.
Yeah, so I mean, it had to go before the commission, the commission has to vote on putting R F P out. That was not in a meeting, it was just being discussed.
Yeah, and, and I discussed the details with Rod, and I, I believe miscommunicated that we should go ahead and. Get the bids, so I apologize to you. Um. But we have, we do have to agree to that, but, but my question is, where are we having them bid, are we having the bid, the initial idea, we want to. Look at also, an alternative enclosed building, having to both?
Yeah, I'd have been both, I mean, might as well go through the bids, and turn, talk about putting in. And then we'll get to dimensions, we'll go ahead and put a, a R F P out for, for a building to be put there also. It's not going to hurt, yeah. Yeah.
You, you're looking at.
You're, I missed, I mean.
Bulletproof glass, something to remove the lead and everything else, and.
Oh, yeah.
You're looking multi-million dollar.
I mean, it ain't going, it, is it going to hurt to get a bid? It's not going to hurt to get a bid, I, I mean, I know, Mike, you showed me one that was four million dollars a couple of years ago. Four million dollars.
It's a, it's a multi-million dollar building.
Well, it's paradise, right? Ask him on, what age is that?
It was.
It was, I asked him about it, he said, I remember it, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand.
Right.
Yes, like that.
For the range itself.
For the range itself.
Yes, but that was. Not, not during.
Okay.
Yeah, this is like.
Rob, you had to.
Right. You prefer an open range, right?
I mean.
Well, I mean. Well, I mean, we might as well put it out for bids, just in case.
And then, Jean, you guys, the, the blueprints we have up there, what we moved is down there, there's a lot, it was smaller, and a lot different, because we don't have a carpet, that we can have girl scout camps.
Right there across. Chief, do you have the, uh, specifications that you need?
Which one?
For the.
Specifications for the bid for a, a shooting range.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Location, location.
Well, but it's still a specification, it gives us an idea.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The only thing is, legally, we have to run it in a newspaper for two weeks. At the end of the two weeks, you tell them, all bids have to be turned in by this time on this day, and then we will open the bids on February the seventeenth.
Who puts that out, does the commission put it out, or does the church department has to do it?
You, you write the bid up. Yeah. Okay, so I'll make a motion then, that we place an ad for this, the specifications for the shooting range that Chief Deputy Purdue will produce. Give to Ruth, so they can look at and verify. All bids will be run, or the, uh, ad will be run for two weeks, and the bid opening will be on February seventeenth.
Well, I had, just have a quick, before a second, that, I just have a quick question. Why is the Girl Scout camp no longer viable option?
For the county commission, that no way in.
There's a new county commission, and we've had a study. So I'm just, I'm just asking, because, because the hundred and eighty, now, four million, no. But a hundred and eighty, including the sixty, you know, why wouldn't we do a better range?
Well, and here's the deal.
And it'd probably be more net with construction, but.
I mean. I can give it to them, but anyway, I'm at the point, and I hold you to this, and I.
I know your, your wits in, but, but if, if we're moving forward one way or the other. Why don't we look at that, since it's been studied, it's been, and then we can bid that out, why don't we bid them both out, why don't we propose?
There's not an entrance into the Girl Scout camp, large enough to, to take the trees in and out that needs to be logged. Um, we can't get anybody to.
No, it's been cruised three times.
Yeah.
But anyway, I was. I know what Rob was asking, Mr. President, before y'all vote on this, my question is. If we have Girl Scout, we have this one, and this one. What, what do you want, you want the vigilant ones, that we came back to big?
Ideal, like, start, you know, um, i- if you have the three, upgrade the current range that the club is using. Build one in this new location that, that Rod scoped out, or build one at the Girl Scout location that you already have, you know, engineer, an engineering report on. What's your dream sheet, I mean, what's the priority here? So Girl Scout, so why don't we bid out the Girl Scout?
Okay, then, I'll withdraw my motion, and I, uh, I vote that we move this to, uh, February the first, and make a firm decision.
Well, what?
I withdraw my motion, and ask that we put this on hold until February the first, so we can make a firm decision on what location we're going to go with.
Oh, well.
I think we could do all of it.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, we can either bid them all, or, since they're, they, their wish, and, and there's a new commission. In place that we could vote on the Girl Scout, I mean, that's, is that what you want?
I don't think this, Taylor understands, correct me if I'm wrong, the Girl Scout option is a four million dollar project. Okay, it's not.
I'll be honest with you, that, all that is already. You didn't even have, so, no, that's.
Okay, I see what you're saying, okay, I thought you said. Okay, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, so that's the dream, is, is the Girl Scout camp.
And then there needs to be public hearings on it.
So, Abby, you have any input about that location?
Um, I mean, as far as recreation goes, that's part of our trail plan as well, because trails all of her.
Can it be moved, the trail, you haven't built it there yet?
Um, potentially, I don't know exactly the spot where there.
But you could potentially move it if we, so we wouldn't, instead, we wouldn't be building into an area where the trails are already being built. We could. Yeah, I saw where they are. Um, so, I mean, we've already engineered that, so you could probably work around that spot, it sounds like.
Me.
The Girl Scout spot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking on the map, where that, if yours is a trail plan that we all paid for years ago.
Right, and the county.
Right, and, uh, you know, uh, V U and. State Patrol Division and, uh, Commission, and.
I need a break.
And we're, you know.
I'm answering.
We're, we're hoping the commission, particularly Tom, is excited about the fact that we're trying to build a trail in County Park, is, is the county part.
Let's take a break.
We're gonna go look and see where that, I'm curious to see where it is on the Girl Scout property and, you know, and look how maybe, you know, you can do landforms and stuff.
All right, let's take a break.
A hearing.
All right.
It'll probably cause it to reverberate.
Bring this meeting back, back to order. I think the discussion, I think we're going to hold the bids. Correct me if I'm wrong with what we, hold the bids off until February first, decision on making the bids February first on the, uh, shooting range. Motion to postpone to February first?
Second.
All in favor?
What was the?
I was not.
Motion to postpone to February first.
Okay, I, yeah, I agree with that. I. Sorry, I spaced out real quick.
Discussing decision on the, uh, Paint Creek, uh, spill testing. I talked to a Jennifer, uh, Harold from, uh, town, the manager of Canola County and discussed her. They have a testing quote on the, uh, Paint Creek testing and the commission priorly just ma- made a decision to, uh, put ten thousand dollar allocation for bidding. I think it was fifteen thousand.
So the test development is fifteen thousand dollars. Now, if you guys were, but your cost of that seventy-five hundred and then work out the details, the test costs itself later, just the test development is fifteen thousand. Didn't we allocate ten thousand toward that already? And then we had six wells that wanted testing and that was, how many, was it five hundred per well? Let me look, I probably have that in text message from.
There's an additional thing.
Yeah.
That's just, that's just to do the testing.
So this, that looks like two hundred dollars. I'm just saying, we should probably also address the, the six wells wanting testing.
Well, I don't think the, the price is out there for that yet.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, there, I, I was looking for that for an estimate.
Legally, how is this going to set us up with having everybody else's well tested throughout?
No, this is just Fayette County.
Okay, but I mean, throughout the county, we have thirty-nine percent of the people without safe drinking water and they're using wells.
For the spill, this isn't to see if their drinking water is safe, it's to check it for that.
If they have a, an attorney that's good, they could actually come back and say, hey, they did that for them, so I'm going to have this done for me. Could that open us up? I'm just asking a question.
Apples and oranges.
Okay.
I mean, the county, at the end of the day, the county doesn't have to conduct the testing that we're talking about. I mean, it's, considering it. But I don't think other citizens can force the county to conduct testing, potentially because we did it in one instance.
Okay.
I mean, we also, I mean, keep in mind, I mean, we, we have a somewhat toxic chemical that now.
Yeah.
In their yards, so it's, it's not a situation where we just replay it. Or, you know, Android special interests. I mean, there's a, there's a legitimate reason behind why we're talking about doing this.
Yeah, well, I was just making sure that we couldn't have somebody else come back and.
Well, I'm saying, somebody's not going to show up and say.
Here's the distinction. The distinction is, this is testing for the chemical from the spill. It's not to test, we're not testing to see whether their water is safe to drink. Right, we highly suspect their water is not safe to drink. And they know that and they're going to be getting city water as an option, hopefully by spring. So we're not looking at us not testing private wells throughout the county. This is, we're specifically addressing the consequences of this spill, which in fact, we need to do if we're going to recover anything and damages from this, you know, if, from this company, we're suing them.
It's even a special test.
Yeah.
And make.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the expense with Canola County.
Well, we allocated and, and moved and approved ten thousand dollars already. If seventy-five hundred of it needs to go to the testing. And I found an email that Dr. Stewart sent back in, uh, sent us all back in, um, December that said, at the time, the estimate was about two hundred per sample and there are six wells, six, uh, Fayette County citizens that would like their water sampled. So that should be covered by the ten thousands. Yeah, so, um, so I think we've already.
We've already approved.
We've already approved up to ten thousand dollars for it. And if we need to approve more, we can.
Yeah, we approved it.
Okay, withdraw.
Okay. So Exhibit A. Okay, the letter for the D I. I read it. This is about Lansing, the, and I'm questioning Lansing and.
Yes, and then there was also, we talked about the Capco Road off of nineteen, where there's four ninety-degree turns and an eighteen-wheeler in December tried to make it down there and is a single A road and it took, I think, almost eight and a half hours to pull them out. That one in there too, right?
It was not in there.
Cause I didn't know about it.
So we should probably do two different letters since it's two different.
No, I agree with you. And I thought, I thought both of those in there.
Well, it just says letter to D O H. I don't know why we couldn't approve both letters. In concept, I mean, as long as it follows the same. You know, we could, or we could just add, since we're sending one letter, why don't we just add the details for that other location in the same letter? What are you guys saying?
Honestly, if I get a letter, I usually look at the first paragraph and if it's something of interest, I keep going and the stuff at the bottom gets leaving.
Well, we can put a subject line that says roads and list both roads, list, you know, two subject lines and then they can read below about the details. And then you're, you're right there looking at it.
I wouldn't mind either way, either, either one of them.
I'm fine with either way. I'm just saying that, you know, we already have one letter drafted and we could probably amend the letter and send one.
Well, can I have, can we have this one by February first?
Yeah, I can amend it tomorrow and send it to you.
Okay, we can still approve both of them, right?
Do you want us to put it back on the agenda or do you want it just approved on today?
I think we ought to approve both of them today.
Yeah, I do too. We don't need a new agenda item for it. Well, I move that we approve the letter as drafted and, um, we can all look at the draft of the other letter. We know what it's going to say in general and then allow them to stamp our signatures.
My second. Go on favor.
You've got to remember to do that last one.
I, I forget it every time.
I know, and I keep wanting to say it for him.
And then Sheriff.
Okay, the next is the quality management plan for brownfield assessment grant for a free one signature. This is basically Amy, if I'm wrong, making sure we follow standards of the grant and all the requirements.
Yes, we cannot start, um, actually working on this grant, um, and draw down funds until this is in place and has been, um, signed by the other party at the DB, or the EPA, sorry, EPA. Um, so this is what we hired, Reenbrier, Environmental to do for us is to put together this plan and then, um, take care of all the other reporting that goes along with, um, all the assessment that we will do over the course of the next three years.
Amy, has there been a schedule put together yet of, of what?
What properties?
Yeah, what property?
Um, actually, we wanted to discuss with you how, how involved the commission wants to be. Do you want us to just come up with a list or if you want to add to the list, um, we have plenty of time, but, um, we have some ideas of properties, um, specifically Fayette County Park pool. And, um, possibly the memorial building, because this can all go towards, um, economic redevelopment. So, um, at the end, it, it also depends on how many, how much money ends up having to go into any phase once we have to do, which is the actual ground testing. Um, which if we're doing a pool, that's going to eat up some. So it just depends on how much money we have, but we should definitely get a long list and then a short list.
Well, I'd definitely like to know what direction we're going and what properties we're looking at.
And we also, we originally, or the grant was originally written for the Collins Middle School, um, and the Bus Farm project. Um, or the Bus Garage project, but Region Four has, um, taken that on as their, one of their projects since it involves several municipalities. So that kind of frees us up from that. So we discussed using this money for dilapidated housing, but if we, we're still waiting on earmark money. We get that, that takes care of thirty houses there along the corridors. So it just kind of depends which way you guys want to go.
We can still approve it, but you can bring.
Oh, yeah.
Paperwork and then they would bring to us a list of properties for us to say yay or nay to.
And, uh, Reenbrier Environmental and, um, my project officer from the EPA and I had a, um, kickoff meeting two weeks ago, just to kind of make sure everybody was on the same page and to meet.
My motion to approve.
Sure.
All in favor?
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and give you, this is that letter you obviously need to sign, Collins to sign. This gives the State Property Tax Department, Commission to review and make changes, pass their original January fifteenth deadline.
Yeah, we said okay on that one.
Yeah. I move we approve it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I. I also move that we, um, empower the county administrator to to handle this letter and this, then we, well, how we say we're going to do it, standing approval. Let's do a standing, I move that we have a standing approval for this. We have to do this every year.
I thought we already did this.
Well, we talked about it.
Yeah.
She recommended it in email, but we didn't make a decision on it.
Okay.
On the record. Um, so.
All in favor?
The last item is Sheriff Fridley and we need, um,
Of course, the A B, I don't have any prices or anything on there. I just wanted to bring this to the, to the commission. I guess after this, I'm gonna go up the ballpark, I'm gonna go and feel some, quite some grass in the section side and on the side. Out of all the buildings in this courthouse, you know, that area very busy. Um, lots of citizens coming in. We haven't put in, we got one of, I'm in office here, one on the lower floor here and one over in Mashport. Um, Dave was asking, could I get some pricing? I'm talking to Walker in pricing. For A D for the lower level.
I'll tell you where I need one on the second floor where I, after I climb the stairs.
I'm gonna try to take them if you want me.
Okay. Nice to know.
I guess, I like to do some pricing, say, I'm just gonna be, that they put one over lower.
Can I get a portable one?
Pricing or anything, this is, yeah, before I was gonna waste Kevin's time, because I know he's busy and me, me, I was looking to see. All right, I go ahead and do some pricing and then I know that that Taylor can only pay a certain amount, so, but I might even have some, I'll be honest, I, but I might have something up here to spot, I can give one today normally.
I think Kevin's going to do, looks for grant funding. Yeah, I was gonna say, did you ask him about?
I did. Again.
Okay, what about your, while we're talking about, about your new detective bureau digs? Do you think that you should have one over there? Do you think that there should be one available?
Well, I mean.
In the, uh, probation office?
I don't know.
Only places that they located now, this room is first floor here, my office over here and one in the the, the Mashon area. That's the only D I I know of.
Okay, so then that leaves D R C if we're going to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, once we get an estimate.
I can just get Kevin, we're gonna do it and then get the pricing and buy grants, we have to come out to the commission and say.
Yeah.
Whatever, okay? And I, I'll take care of what I see. Thank you. Next is, um, about pay for my support staff, meaning the tax deputies and my secretary staff and our officers, the sheriff's office. I, I submitted a letter back on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, to our county commissioner.
Excuse me, just one minute, Mike. Aren't we going to be doing budgets and stuff like that next month? Okay.
This is the, the reason I, oh, go ahead.
So I was just wondering why we're doing it now instead of in February, when you could request it with your budget.
Because I wrote a letter back in October and I need some answers if you, on my request.
Okay.
Questions about some other stuff that ran into this pain.
Okay, all right, sorry, just clarifying.
Yes, sir. So, um, Brooke called and said, hey, Sheriff, we talked to you, came over, she goes, can't do this, but you paying for maintenance worker, a part-time maintenance worker, that's okay, it's no, you should, I'm sure you're getting that. Um, Debbie Thompson, who's currently, was hired back in June fourth, two thousand seventeen. I don't know who hired her. Then I said that nobody approved it, um, mission-wise.
Or me.
But it was June first, two thousand seventeen. Prior to that, there was, uh, Brad Forell, worked at the Valley detachment, Matt and Neil, down at the, um, Valley detachment, cleaning up and stuff in part-time. And the reason that Debbie came up here, I remember a fun time, um, Sonny was shorthanded, people quit and yada, yada, yada. Um, then I'm just working down there, she would work once or twice a week or whatever, could not move right and come in and clean the sheriff's office here. Um, so I went back and checked the budgets all the way back to Bill Larry's first term. And well, when I'm in two thousand fourteen, what I'm getting to is currently I have three thousand overtime and six thousand in extra paid that I was budgeted these last couple of years. It used to be eleven thousand for Edgar Helm and three thousand, two thousand fifteen. It was the same all the way up to two thousand seventeen. With the last year it happened in two thousand eighteen, it dropped to the current nine thousand dollars, where they took three thousand. Our commission took three thousand out of that fund. So since two thousand eighteen, nineteen twenty-one to current, it's always been the same, the nine thousand total, say six thousand and three thousand. Um, I went back and looked and I made, I had to make a lot of budget adjustments at the end of the year, flipping over and over time in certain areas and stuff. Um, in two thousand eighteen, I used five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars of that. That's nineteen, I got the same amount. Um, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, it was seventy-nine hundred dollars. Two thousand eighteen, one other time, thirty-two hundred dollars. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, total of four hundred dollars, I used the balance out of the budgets within the sheriff's office. Well, with all this being said, we currently do not do land sales anymore, which all y'all know about that, but we still got an out letters and so forth to the citizens that have paid their taxes. This last year, Anna and, Anna, the chief tax deputy, interior made it all this with herself, don't need any extra help to do this stuff, it will be made itself anymore. Um, so as I requested, there was pay raises, the total with FICA, um, retirement and everything included, will be total seven thousand dollars. I leave a buffer of two thousand dollars in that, but then then to my, I'm gonna give people pay raises. Um, there was a total of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, staff employees. And it varied from fifteen hundred dollars a year down to two hundred fifty dollars per person. And then it went by how long they've been here, how hard they work, what dog responsibilities they have and stuff. And so that's why I'm asking if I could do that and make adjustments within that budget of the nine thousand was allotted to be able to give these ten people pay raises. Some of them, but, and thank you to the county committee. And thank you to the county commission for giving the five percent pay raises last year. Some of them, even with their pay raises, are gonna be making twenty-five, nine seventy-five, it'd be the lowest paid. And the highest paid would be the chief tax deputy. And varies from twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight, there's a couple that have been here for a while. That would make about thirty thousand, and then again, like I said, my chief tax deputy would make, we say, something like that. So that's what I'm asking for.
You just, you're talking about asking to change your internal budget.
Yes, sir.
Just not go over your budget, change your internal budget. How much difference, how, how much work is on the land sales?
It's a, it's a lot of work, um, we would have to, we still gotta.
So you don't have to do the land work.
Do that number call, David.
Okay, I, I don't, I was just wondering if there's a lot of work now, there's not a lot of work involved.
And then we always got extra help for that.
Okay, okay, you always hired extra help.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mike, just a general question, when's the last performance reviews your people received?
On.
From your supervisor?
Which on this empty sides or?
On the, on the tax office side.
Um, you know, I think Anna, I, I can't, I can't tell you one hundred percent, Tom, but we talked about this just a couple of weeks ago. Um, without getting into my detail, because I think that's something in executive session.
Okay.
Battery question, it's been within the last months or so.
Okay, so it hasn't, I'm just asking generally, I'll, I'm gonna ask everybody, but they generally do performance reviews for the people? Okay.
Cause I think it's fair, cause, and I said, I think this is in the budget meetings last year, I said. And the county commission, and you know, all agreed, and I think this thousand, really agreed, and this, this too. You know, if, if, I'm just using an example, can't do with the deficit here, it's back home, you gotta do something, but. Say the county commission came, I said, we're gonna give everybody twelve hundred dollars to cover the budget. Well, you've been in trouble, you've been late, you abuse your sick leave, you abuse different things, and. Guess what, if you left up to the, the liquid official, you're not gonna get that. And then I can spread that money out, or that liquid official can spread that money without the one that, or can give them more than five. I agree with that one hundred percent.
What, what do we, if this is an adjustment within your own budget that doesn't affect our budget, what say do we have in it? Like, I'm just having trouble.
That's what I'm, that's why I asked you to that.
And then I guess what came up, and Ruth and I all, was that the pay for the, to, you don't have that much money, Mike. Because you paying for a maintenance worker. But I didn't know how I paid for it.
But, but your detachments, right?
But then my question.
Sorry, John. So who's paying for the maintenance people?
He pays for half of her salary, so she's. And the sheriff's department, so I figured out who hired her because the commission didn't.
We don't know.
And, I mean, in all reality, Sunny doesn't supervise her. Sunny doesn't sign the time sheets, she's the sheriff's department employee.
And I don't know where I came from, that was from two thousand, like I said, I went back to two thousand fourteen, and it's always been down there.
How long has she been there then?
She, she started on June first of two thousand seventeen, she started.
Well, that, okay. There has to be some decision in two thousand seventeen, hadn't it?
Well, no idea.
Oh, I'm sorry, who was in charge of, was Sunny doing Sunny's position in two thousand seventeen? But he don't oversee the sheriff's people. Uh, she's, she's. Yeah, in fact, that's why I asked earlier, really, we don't have the say-so over your budget, once we give you your, in my opinion.
But she's not, but she's not working in.
Well, I mean, my boss, if you absorb that salary, then she reports to Sunny and Sunny, she's Sunny's employee.
And it's a part-time employee, so.
Not, because I'm not signing time sheets for his budget, I don't think they should sign time sheets for Sunny's budget. And obligate, you know what I mean?
And I, I would tell the district minister, the Ruth can verify this, this lady is a hard worker. And she's good, I mean, she really is, but she's out ill, she's been out for a while, we don't even know if she's gonna come back, I'm just gonna be honest, I don't know.
Is she on F M L A? We probably shouldn't discuss all of this on the record.
Yeah, so who's cleaning now?
The secretaries and Sunny's staff.
I wanna stop moving that we go into executive session, discuss personnel.
Yeah, second. Okay, it's, uh, eleven seventeen. We have anything else, do we have anything else to discuss?
No. Were there decisions made? Did you make the changes to the minutes?
No decisions were made.
And we'll just get back to those minutes next week, I made a couple of changes, maybe he's gonna look into.
Okay, and.
Don't wanna put in there that you have to give a line item revision, you have to approve that.
I don't intend, I don't think we need to do that, I think he needs to manage it within his own.
You have to move that money.
Yeah, you have to move it.
That money has to. From those two line items to the salary line.
After that money is available. Be moved, right?
Well, yeah, but he's gonna do it now, so.
Oh, he is, is that what happened? I'm sorry, I got distracted when he brought up the other issue, okay. Okay.
Once we get done talking about that, I have, I have questions. We done done on that, okay, I wanna verify that for February first meeting. We're going to put out bids for a pistol building. Park shooting range and a Girl Scout shooting range. Am I correct on those?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we should also approach the fire association about that property.
Well, we can approach them, but. And it, can it be done by the first Mr. Fire Coordinator guy?
Uh, since we talked about shooting range, can we not just agree during this meeting to send them a letter and ask them?
I think it should be a face-to-face meeting and.
Well, I mean, but.
There's only agenda.
Well, just the fire shooting range, or request for bids at that insane property location.
Yeah, but I was just verifying, and then at one time, we talked about a climbing wall for the memorial building, and it was never discussed anymore. That's, did it go through the park, yeah, I was gonna say the park director. Okay, and when, when is that, do we have something set up with them?
Abby's on her presentation, not the park board.
Okay, when is?
Her presentation's first.
Okay, well, yeah, the park board takes care of all that, I believe.
Yeah, normally, we're supposed to be coming to us with recommendations and stuff, and I'm sure they will.
Well, I, I have several suggestions for the park and the park board, so if we could get them on the meeting agenda.
Somebody suggested me, like food truck competitions, there's not one in this part of the state either, I mean. Well, Abby's on for the first, I wonder if they could come in.
Whenever we can get them, as soon as possible. And then we have that meeting on February fifth, or sixth, seventh, fifth, sixth, and seventh, or seven, six, seventh, eighth, I'll be there on that Monday. Um, and then we have that meeting on Tuesday.
We have the meeting on the seventh, on Wednesday, I think.
Oh, that Wednesday, the seventh, yeah, so.
No, that's, you're right, that's Tuesday.
It's because of board equalization and.
Yeah, the board of equalization, so, since I will be here, and if you guys wanna stay. Then I can do the, I can do, be here doing this part while you guys are on the phone. If that.
I mean, that's, that's, I mean, I don't.
Calling, I mean, talk, it's still around the meeting from, I mean, I ran it over Zoom before.
I don't mind doing that if you wanna be here.
Yeah, I mean, since, you know, I'm only gonna go on Monday.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem.
Okay, so I'll do that, I'll be here for that part, and then you guys, you know, do the phone-in thing. Cause hopefully, I mean, I don't know of any, have you been told of anything, the Board of Equalization?
They can wait until the day of, I believe.
That's why they're scheduled, and yes. Okay. All right, just as long as I have that paper to read, and then I'll leave the paper for Tom to read after that.
We'll be opening it up on February first, that's the first.
Yeah. Then you gotta read that paper every meeting.
On that, um, one property, on these properties, did we, did we vote for nine and ten? So on the tenth, what are we gonna do with that?
Well, we, I guess, on this turmoil we had, I was gonna request Anthony to get ahold of them and see if they would. Work with Sam at property, or see what they plan on doing to, to remodel that property. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and there's, they're side by side, they're like mirrors.
And, and you know, looking at the structure from the front, if they should have took pictures all the way around it, it'd been better. Didn't look like there was any cracks in it, what I looked at, I was looking for cracks, was you looking for?
The only thing is, if the fire was on the inside, you'd see all the cracking on the inside. And if that moor cracked and popped on the inside.
Well, see, the only difference in them block, them block, a regular block, is they're not hollow.
That's right. That's correct.
They're not hollow, so if that block would crack, in my opinion, I'm not, I make hot dogs for them, but if that block would have cracked, it would have cracked all the way through it. Cause it's solid. Sell it to the county, or are, are they gonna remodel it, and if not, they would, they need a timeframe on, in my opinion, on how the other commissions feel. A timeframe on the model.
Yeah, just.
I mean, it's a nice, it could be a nice house, I believe.
It could be a very nice home, just like the ones you did at Smithers, when I was at, do that type of a letter to them.
I'll tell you, I was also gonna have Angela look up and put on this map prior to this, how much they actually paid for the property. So we have a reference on how much they paid for it, what it's gonna cost to demo it, and what the value is of.
Assuming everybody was honest, should be able to get that.
Well, if it's, if it's bought from a land sale, it, it has to be recorded as a land sale. And most of them, I believe, was from land sales, I, I think.
Should be indeed.
Yeah. Well, you need these cards over there, if you go look up, you know, there's cards at the. Map cards, yeah, you see it, what they pay.
Well, private sales, there's not always.
Yeah, it's not only the truck, yeah. It could be, yeah.
So we are gonna do the, the fire, we are gonna talk to the fire association too. Just talk to the fire.
Yeah, just talk to them, yeah.
And then if we get them to agree, then we put them on there for a bid too.
Yeah.
Is that all the questions?
He did not vote on a line item revision.
Oh. I'm sorry, Ruth, okay, you were gonna look at that.
So I, I vote on the, I'll move that we make a line item revision, provided that the money is in the sheriff's budget. To make that revision.
And I already allocated.
Right.
But, second, second. All in favor?
And then with regard to the minutes, like I said, Amy's gonna make a couple of changes for me, and we'll have them next. John had it ready, I just saw something. Looked off, she's gonna check it.
Thing else?